Okay, thank you.
So Mike, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, hi, Reginald.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting of the municipal council for May 20th, 22th order. And the first agenda, I'm doing zero harm, Laurie.
Oh man, I'm probably gonna forget somebody. Um, tone?
Here.
Emily.
Austin?
Here.
Bert?
Present.
Wes?
Present.
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Sard?
Present.
So the next item is the conference of the citizens present.
Go.
Um, the comments of the citizens present are delivered in two minutes per speaker. Anyone who wants to speak?
Hi, this is Kathy. I have a letter from a constituent who asked me to read it as part of the citizens' comments.
Okay.
This letter is from Kermit Holby. His address is 7018 Hubbard Avenue, and he is also on the Sustainability Committee. His letter reads, Dear City Alders, Mayor, and City Staff, Thank for your topsy-turvy in this COVID-19-infected world for us all. Thanks for your public service through this trying time, and thanks for the city's acknowledgement of birthday and last calcomity. We can't forget longstanding challenges in the presence of the new. Although I may be known, best known for my efforts addressing climate crisis, this time I call attention to COVID-19 challenges as well. These both have striking parallels and intertwined causes. For all of our sake, please continue to stand strong with a well-reasoned, thoughtful, evidence-based, and scientifically sound approach to address COVID-19 as well as the crisis, climate crisis. Particularly for COVID-19, please don't cave into the imprudent demands to early go back to normal. Do what you can to keep others in government and in the community from caving in either. Let us elaborate further with this text from my letter to the editor in the Wisconsin State Journal. Self-styled freedom patriots refuse to heed public health guidelines to protest stay-at-home orders, including here in Madison on April 24th, recklessly threw themselves and others into the contagion stew of coronavirus transmitters as they urged government officials to do likewise with Wisconsin and the entire country. Yet to be free, to live in freedom, we need to live in the real world, a world based on truth, facts, and evidence. To live in ignorance imprisons us and denies our freedom. Freedom diminishes and disappears through disease and death when people ignore sound, evidence-based, public health practices. Solving the COVID-19 crisis demands we seek, find, and apply the best information we can find. It requires we listen to those who know and then act accordingly. It requires recognizing the COVID-19 crisis is really happening, really serious. We have really made it worse by what many have done, and can, we can really make it better by what we do now. And guess what, solving the climate crisis demands a save. I can meet the, we can meet the challenge of COVID-19 and of the climate change. Let our officials know we support well-reasoned, evidence-based policies to protect the health of us all, the planet, and the com, and the economy. Thanks sincerely, Kermit Holby. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Now, Mike, do you want to read that letter with your constituency constituents? Or you did telecopy or what?
Are you referring to me, Mayor?
Yes, you had, you remember there was a wrong communication.
Yeah, I was, yeah, it was just an email that came from somebody who's actually available on the screen I see here. She's participating in the meeting, Jean Antoine. So I think the letter speaks for itself unless she wishes to add.
Well, Jean, do you want to speak?
Jean Antoine?
Jean is here.
Would you like to speak?
One second, please. Not this evening. We have a written letter submitted.
Okay, and the city council has received the letter, Mayor, so you're, you're free to go and move on.
Okay. All right. So if there's no more comments from the citizens present, I'm going to blow that comment vision.
Are there any other comments from citizens present?
Hi, this is, this is Jocelyn, this is Jocelyn from the library. I just wanted to give a really quick update from the Middleton Public Library. We've been offering curbside service for about a week and a half, and it's been going really well. We have expanded the service to not just what was previously available, but what is currently available in and on the hold shelves in the Middleton Library. Delivery is still canceled throughout all South Central libraries, but every library in Dane County is currently offering some version or form of curbside service. So we will continue this through the rest of the month. And, and then wait for further instruction and guidance from public health experts for, through, through Dane County and also per the governor's orders. The library board is also looking at a five-staged plan that we'll be reviewing next Tuesday in a virtual library board meeting that is of course open to the public as well. The five-stage plan looks at accommodating a limited number of people in the building, including staff, and staffing for social distancing. And we'll be providing updates as we get closer to making any changes. Please feel free to reach out if you've got any questions or if your constituents in your districts have any questions. We're happy to answer anything that we can. Thank you.
There, we also have Eric Cushman who wants to speak.
Okay, I am. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, my name is Eric Cushman, resident of Middleton. This will be 18 years this fall. Live at 5534 Upland Trail. And I'll just take a couple minutes, as I'm allotted. As a small business owner, I'm used to crunching numbers on an hourly, if not daily, basis. And as an essential business involved with transportation and logistics, I've seen the market peak mid-March and now see our economy hitting unemployment of 20% and market rates in my business plummeting to non-sustainable levels. Prices are down 40 to 50% when costs have not changed. Now, I look at the data for Wisconsin, and I wonder how we can ethically demand people stay at home and non-essential businesses remain closed. What we have seen from the beginning of the shutdown are officials picking winners and losers as it pertains to businesses and social gathering points like synagogues, churches, mosques. What I mean by that is a locally-owned craft jewelry or clothing store, probably owned by a resident of Middleton, has to remain closed while Pick 'n Save or Target and Costco remain open, selling the exact same items. We tell people they cannot gather in small groups and should remain inside. However, we allow mass gatherings at the aforementioned stores. Each has a capacity over 250 people or more at any given time. Why do we feel that they could safely operate with 75 to 100 employees at one time, but a small store cannot with three employees? The fact that 350 people have lost their lives throughout the state due to COVID-19 in the last seven weeks since we've been tracking is truly sad, devastating. However, looking at the data, on average, almost 1,000 people die every day in the state of Wisconsin. Our hospitals are now allowing elective surgeries, and I just got an email today from UW Madison asking for donations due to the massive losses based on poor metrics and theories. I personally would tell the Middleton Board and Mayor to open up the entire city for business. Over 60% of the businesses are already operating safely with no issues. However, many are not profitable. Bars and restaurants make money on beverages, not food. And the PPP program only helps businesses that have high costs associated as it pertains to payroll. Ultimately, businesses don't want to take on more loans or debts. Business owners are calculated risk takers. We strive to please our customers. Now, how can you tell a salon they cannot be trusted, but a landscape company in our city can have 200 people shopping on a recent Saturday? Let's be rational, and let's truly think of our neighbors. Many, so to speak, are dying on the vine because publicly traded companies have been deemed essential while they've been told to stay at home, and they cannot open or run their business. I'd be more than happy, happy to offer a plan for expedited opening of small businesses so the backbone of Middleton and our society can reinstate employees and revenue.
Thank you, Honor. Mike, is there anyone else who is ready to speak at this time?
I'm not aware of anyone else. Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Okay, we are honored that, I want to know that part of the meeting and we want to do presentation. And we are honored that the county director, Joe Preece, is here. And he is going to talk about his presentation concerning the coronavirus pandemic.
Sorry, are you ready for, should I go now?
Yes, please.
Okay, excellent. All right, well, thank you, everyone. Thank you for giving me some time to come and address you tonight. I wanted to give a little overview of everything that's been going on at the county level and be available to answer questions if you have them or to get you any additional information that you need regarding the county response. As you know, Dane County was the first county in the state and the 12th location in the entire nation to have the first, a case of COVID-19. And what this did is it, it, it had us kind of go into action before a lot of other folks did. We began the transition internally in county government to look at what we needed to do, just like other units of government are doing and businesses are doing in order to, in order to work in a safe manner, transition to do a lot of our work remotely. As you know, a lot of our work is dealing with vulnerable populations, and we can't do that remotely. For example, we run a nursing home. Early on, we closed down the nursing home to visitors. We run a jail, so we have a lot of first responders there. And our human services department does a lot of interacting. That said, a lot of our folks have transitioned to, to working remotely. We activated our emergency operations center early. Many of you here are probably on the weekly calls that we have to coordinate efforts between all units of government, healthcare providers, community-based organizations, schools, et cetera. Like a lot of, lot of businesses, we've been hit pretty hard also. We estimate that Dane County will probably, in county government, lose probably 20 to 30 million dollars in sales tax revenue just this year. And the Alliance Energy Center, for all practical purposes, is, is, is nearly shut down. So what we've done with the Alliance Energy Center is we have repurposed it for a number of different operations. Because the farmer's market could not continue, the downtown Saturday farmer's market, as it had been before, we partnered with the farmer's market, and now there is a drive-through farmer's market occurring on Saturdays at the Alliance Energy Center. We've also partnered with Second Harvest Food Bank, and we are giving them space at the Alliance Energy Center to receive, store, and sort food due to the increasing demand. And you may have also been aware of the fact that the Alliance Energy Center has been designated the site for an alternate care center slash field hospital if necessary. At this point, the design work has been done. The Army Corps of Engineers and National Guard has come in, and they are not going forward with the construction at this point, but it will be there if needed. Kind of somewhat turnkey, it's, it's, the sites identified, the plans are there, the, all the, the pre-setup work has been done. We're fortunate in that we've been very successful with our safer-at-home guidelines here, and our cases have been, have been increasing, but at a very slight rate. One of the things that we're waiting for now in, in looking at that rate is we are waiting on the state for more supplies for broader testing so that we can get a clearer snapshot of just how widespread the coronavirus is. And then we can plug that into a dashboard and into the metrics so when it's, so we'll have an accurate picture of, of what the actual spread is when we can look, so we can look at redialing back up at a safe moment in time. We've also been dealing with a number of relief efforts. Last week, we announced a $3 million partnership with Second Harvest Food Bank and our local farmers. We've run into kind of a situation where we needed to build a bridge between our farm community, who was losing markets due to the pandemic and, and, and supply chain issues. And as we all saw, you know, farmers dumping milk and that sort of thing. At the same time that we have 30,000 people filing for unemployment and demand at food banks higher than it's ever been. So this partnership made it possible for Second Harvest to get more of their food from our local farmers, our dairy farmers, meat farmers, our CSA vegetable growers. And so that's, that's a partnership that will help both the farmers find a market and people who need food get, get that food. We've also added $700,000 in the budget, which will, which will be approved on Thursday night by the county board to add eight more positions to the public health department. These positions are critical in our efforts to contain, and then when we look at dialing back up, when, when, when we are, meet the metrics so we can start opening up the economy again, because we're going to need extra people to do additional testing, and then when positive cases are identified, to do the tracing and the contact, to, to contact everyone those people have been in, in contact with. So we're beefing up the public health department, and those positions should be up and rolling within a month or so. You may have noticed a couple of days ago, it was on Sunday, we announced the expansion of a partnership that we have with an organization called Dane By Local. Dane By Local is made up of local small businesses. And when the pandemic first started appearing here and the safer-at-home guidelines went into place and the small businesses were, were starting to, to, to have to deal with those, the shutdown and the lack of revenue, we quickly got in touch with Dane By Local, and we gave them $250,000 of county funds to start a relief fund for grants to go to local small businesses impacted by COVID-19. As you can imagine, the demand was much more than that. We were able to increase the amount to $800,000. But still, as, as the pandemic has gone on, that, that simply wasn't enough. So we made the decision last week to use $10 million in federal CARES Act money that has come to the county to put that into the Dane By Local Fund for local businesses to apply for. So if businesses have already received a grant from the original fund, they're not eligible for more, but if anyone was turned down or they haven't applied, they can go to Dane By Local to apply for grants as low as $1,000 and upwards of $50,000. This is meant as a lifeline to do everything we can to get resources to our small businesses as quickly as possible to help them in any way we can until we can start dialing back up the economy. Another thing we announced yesterday, or, yeah, I think it was yesterday or two days ago, is in the state legislation that was passed to address COVID-19, it included an option for local municipalities, if they choose and if they have the cash flow ability, to move back their July property tax payment to, to October 1st. So we're, we're passing that enabling legislation in the county, and then local municipalities who choose that route can go ahead and extend that deadline also. I think, before I take questions or get you any other information you, you're interested in, today we announced that we're extending the, the, the county state of emergency by another 60 days. There was some confusion when people heard that. It's, I want to make sure people know, the state of emergency is different than the safer-at-home orders. This has nothing to, the state of emergency isn't related to the safer-at-home order, orders. As the local officials here know, the state of emergency is more of an internal declaration that we do when we activate the emergency operations center. And it also makes us and municipalities eligible for federal reimbursements from FEMA for expenditures that, that you and we are making in response to the COVID crisis, just as we've done in the past when there's been flooding or a tornado, and we have added expenses. This enables folks to keep track of those expenses and seek reimbursement for them. It can also potentially open us up to be able to receive other state and federal aid. So we've extended that for another 60 days. I think maybe I'll stop there, and if anyone has questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And if I don't know the answer off the top of my head, I'd be happy to get the information to you after the meeting.
Joe, I'd like to compliment you for doing an excellent job. It's really, what you're doing is really super.
Thank you.
Joe, this is Mike Davis. I, I had a question concerning the, the, the loans, and I really appreciate your initiative to put $10 million forward to that. I had heard in the initial round that you had 27 million in applications. Is that, is that 10 million going to be gone very quickly as a result?
Yeah, Dane By Local, who is administering this, gave us that number too. They said they've had $27 million in applications. And I should be clear, they're grants, they're not loans, so folks don't have to pay them back. And it's just, you know, it's, it's indicative. You know, the gentleman earlier was talking about the challenge that, that businesses are facing, and, and it's absolutely correct. We're doing everything we can on the local level. We don't have, obviously, you know, the resources that, that the state government has or that the federal government has. But with the CARES Act dollars that we have received, we're looking for the places to put them where they can make the best, the biggest impact. And certainly in the small business community, with that 10 million, that'll bring it up to a total of 10.8 million. We're looking at feeding people, we're looking at getting money to folks who are trying to keep their businesses open. So no, and there, there won't be any one source like the county, unfortunately, that's able to fill all the gaps, but hopefully that 10.8 million will certainly help a number of folks.
Any other questions for Dane County Director Joe Preece? Well, thank you for doing a great job and keep on doing this. Really appreciate that we have brought up, you know. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your time, everyone. Take care.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. And the next item on the agenda is city administrator talking about city pandemic response update.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, we have had a lot of discussion and updates. I learned from our departments today, each one of them has indicated that their employees are healthy. So that's a good thing. I wanted to report back to all of you. Also, the public safety folks have indicated that, for the most part, they are in a good situation with the protective equipment needs. And there's some sharing between the fire department and EMS that hopefully will work for a fit test kit. And I can't tell you what that is, but Steve Lunch is on the call, and he could. We have, I have been exploring what we do in our high-traffic public buildings prior to reopening and after reopening to ensure that they're safe. So at the next meeting of the council on May 19th, I'm hoping to bring a proposal from a, an engineering, environmental engineering company that specializes in reviewing the biological data of buildings and providing a report. We're thinking that that might be best to do after we reopen, and then having that company provide direction to our custodial company on disinfecting. I've also talked to our custodial company for the four buildings downtown, which includes the senior center, the library, city hall, and tourism, about their availability to expand their hours to help us with disinfecting work once we come to the point where we need to reopen our buildings. And the contact that we have has indicated he could do that. So a combination of those things, perhaps another company that would come in and do a total disinfecting job as well are things that we're reviewing. The staff for city hall will be talking in further detail about what kind of safety measures we can put in place at city hall when we do reopen. So those are a few of the updates. And I can also tell you that council member Fusard has broached the subject with the mayor and Lori Burns and me concerning mailing out applications, absentee voter applications to all of our voters. And so we've been kicking that around with Luke, and he may wish to comment as well, because of course Luke's at the meeting. So those are a few of the updates, and we do have our public safety folks online if they wanted to comment any further about PPE that they have in store.
King Troy, you would like to add anything?
Good evening, everybody. No, I think Mike summarized it very well. We are in good shape with PPE gear, and we've been in kind of cooperation with Steve Lunch and Aaron Harris kind of going in together on acquiring the needed, needed PPE gear. So we're in good shape there. I think the only thing that we're seeing from the police department standpoint is an increase of calls for, you know, complaints of social distancing, which are very difficult to enforce. And a lot of that is due to the increase of, or the nicer weather that we're seeing. So we anticipated that. We're taking a very common sense approach to this. We don't want to issue citations, we don't want, want to refer charges to the district attorney's office or make an arrest. We're, we're really asking for voluntary compliance, and for the most part, we're getting that. So overall, things are going well. As Mike talked about, we have a healthy staff, and I'm, I'm hopeful that that will continue throughout this event.
Susan West has her hand up, Mayor.
Yes, I have a question for the chief. You say you're in good shape for PPE for now. How long do you have adequate PPE for?
Well, according to Dane County Emergency Management, we should be asking for PPE for a two-week time period. And I can say with great confidence that we have adequate PPE for two, three, maybe four weeks. It really depends on our calls for service and when it's needed. And with, I'd say within the last week or two, we have not gone through a lot of our PPE supply. So I think we're good for a couple weeks. But I also don't want to be taking a bunch and hoarding it from other departments that need it. So again, we, we're good for a couple weeks, and every week we kind of analyze where we're at, and if we need to make a request through Dane County Emergency Management, we will at that time.
Okay, thank you. I also want to comment, I saw Officer Wood today on a traffic stop wearing PPE, so she should be commended.
Thanks, Susan. Appreciate that.
Chief Lunch?
Yeah, just to kind of pick up a little bit, Mike made a reference before about the test kit, which is kind of our only PPE, you know, area of need right now. And you can recall some of my prior comments, the actual protective equipment that is, you know, of the N95 or greater standard, according to OSHA, there are requirements that it be properly fit-tested using various solutions and, and a hooded environment where you expose someone to a noxious irritant, and then that determines whether the mask is fit properly. So, you know, there's been a kind of a constant change of varying PPE suppliers through this whole pandemic, and we've reached the point right now where, you know, we've got different And we've reached the point right now where, you know, we've got different products out there that we need to fit test for, but the actual kits are nowhere to be found. Literally, I've been for the last four weeks trying to find any vendor and they all are simply saying, you know, product not available, can't give us a time. Now they're saying, suggesting maybe by July we can get those. So, you know, I've been reaching out to different sources out there. And, you know, I just found out today that the fire department does have some testing equipment. Don't know if that's the quantitative or qualitative type that we're looking for, so we're going to do that. Otherwise, we do have a relationship with another EMS provider here in Dane County that might be able to share their fit testing equipment. So that's, that's our biggest challenge right now. But back to the actual supply of it. Yes, it's, it seems to be, you know, stable for right now. The good news is, you may not have been aware, but Joe Parisi said before, the whole focus of PPE supply has changed now. Where essentially to become more efficient, they have made counties to be the actual coordination point for acquiring federal and state assets for distribution down to the local level. And based on a conference call earlier today, Dane County got a huge shipment of PPA in the last couple of days. So they're, they feel they're, you know, sitting pretty good. So even if we need resupply, we, at least at this point, you know, have a pretty good assurance that Dane County is sitting on a reasonable supply for us of the things like the N95 mask and gowns and face shields and things like that. So that's good news. The other piece of good news, you know, we track the numbers regularly. And what they reported today is a real ray of sunshine in that even though testing is actually expanding, today was the first day ever, or actually in the last 24 hours, where no new positive cases came up. And that could be just a fluke in one day. But the good news is that, you know, if that sort of trend continues, that's what we're aiming for. And the number of deaths also stayed, stayed constant. So that's only in Dane County, doesn't, you know, certainly address wider areas out and about out there. But we're hoping that, you know, things are going to start improving. But this is kind of the 10,000-foot view overview there.
Does he have a question?
I'd like to suggest to Steve, for the apparatus for fit testing, if you would contact the Office of Biological Safety at the university. They do that routinely for all the research labs. So they might be able to loan you their equipment. And most of the research labs have been closed down. So.
I'm open to any suggestions. If he got a contact number, I would really appreciate that. So I'll.
I will look that up and I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments to Steve Lunch or Keith Troy or Mike? Okay, I'm going to close that part of the meeting. And I hope that coronavirus pandemic go away soon. I'm going to share my vision of the city with you. Milton is a great place to live, work, raise a family, and retire. Working together, we can make our city even better. Our citizens and all our citizens are generally happy with city operations. Our first responders, police, fire, and emergency medical servants are the best any city could ask for. Most people are happy with all the other city services as well. Weight collection, snow blowing, and street cleaning, to name but a few. However, our citizens and audiences would like our property access to be affordable. We can do even better. As in the past, I plan to keep my promises and work with you on our shared goals. During the past three years, we have made remarkable progress in fixing our major roads such as University Avenue, Diamond Road, and Park Street. Going forward, our focus will be on neighborhood roads. We also need to evaluate and adopt new technology for road repairs as it's available so as to have better roads at low cost. Fixing the 2018 flood damage to our Fesenbank Observatory and the ponds is a high priority. And it's in the process of getting done. In the long run, what really matters is to mitigate floods by working on our shared goals with Thomas Springy, as well as the city of Madison, the major source of our storm water. Without flood mitigation, the restoration of Fesenbank Creek older could be washed away by the next flood. In addition, we must make every effort to protect our businesses along Diamond Bay and Greenway Station. The next one is working with our regional partners. Coronavirus shows how interconnected we are. We have to work with our regional leaders from flood control, mass transport, car theft, and many more issues. We can't help with them and the best way to solve it is to work with them. Like the virus, these problems don't stop at city borders. Other important issues is completing our comprehensive plan, which every town has been working hard at it. Overhousing, building without on plazas, snow off screen, and deciding how to deliver laboratory service to folks in all our city cities, especially those who cannot come to the laboratory. Complete our airport master plan, build North Modota Trail along Century Avenue. As you all know, I'm very passionate about bringing new technology companies to Milton for the future of our city. Imagine what technology would be like 20 years from now. And let's try to build our companies here. Finally, the climate is changing. We have to adopt sustainable practices for the sake of our children, grandchildren, and behalf of our planet. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you and value your input, since your city is helping us and making us better. Thank you. Now move on to the next item on the agenda that the pool of the consent agenda. Is the motion approved?
This is Ramsey. I move to approve the consent agenda.
This is Burke. I second that motion.
The motion is made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passed. Is there anyone? So the next one is the proclamation and the proclamation for National Travel and Tourism Week. And we're going to see a video of it. Mike, for what reasons? Okay, Lloyd? What? There's no sound, but you can look at the pictures.
There's no picture for the TV viewing audience either.
Oh. Okay. I can see my screen, yes.
Well, how about your little one?
Um, no, it's staying on the little one. While it will be on YouTube, but you don't, you don't see on your iPad.
It might be a good opportunity for you to allow Julie Peterman to comment there.
Julie?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to recognize all of the folks in the travel and the tourism industry, playing a role in bringing visitors into the city of Middleton. It was very heart wrenching to listen to Rebecca this evening and knowing the struggles that they're going through in our park and rec department. And to listen to Mr. Parisi talk about repurposing of the Alliance Energy Center, which is one of the great meeting venues that we have in Dane County. COVID-19 has really had some devastating effects on our industry. And Mark talked about it a little bit earlier in the finance committee and the impact that it's going to have on, on room tax revenue. But, you know, we're hopeful in our industry that this is going to turn around. And it's, it's not going to happen overnight. We, we know that it's going to take some time. Initially, we're going to be looking at people from our immediate area that are going to be coming in and doing some day trips. And then gradually, people are going to start crossing the border as they feel that it's safe to do so. So our mission right now is to support our local businesses the best that we can through marketing and promotion and to ensure that we're going to have a safe and secure environment for visitors when they're ready to start moving around. I know that Mari Olsen, who's our marketing manager, and Laura Poritz, who is our convention and event services manager, are on the call this evening. And I want to salute them for the work that they have done over the last three months. It's been very difficult as a, as a team to continue to move forward and plan for the future when there's so much uncertainty. But this industry is very resilient. We have encountered challenges before and we're confident that we're going to move through this. It's going to take a while. It'll probably be at least two years before we're, we're back to where we were in 2019. But we believe that with the support of the council and the support of the community, we can make a contribution to helping tourism come back to what it had been previous to COVID-19. The video basically conveys that message to folks that we're all waiting for the time when we're going to be able to gather again in person, face-to-face, across the table from each other, sharing a beverage and a meal or networking with each other at a meeting. And until that happens, we will be waiting for them. And when they're ready to move, we'll be here to welcome them. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. So that, Julie, we don't need to read this proclamation. That's all. She covered it. Okay. We move on to. And somebody want to make a motion to approve the proclamation?
I'll make that motion. This is Kathy.
Second, this is Susan.
Okay, motion by Kathy and second by Susan. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So the motion passed the emergency. All right, we look for the agreements. And the first one is the storm water management system maintenance agreement with Tuca Properties.
I make, this is Ramsey. I make a motion that we approve the storm water management agreement with Tuca Properties.
This is Fazard. I second that.
Motion by Dan Nancy and second by Fuzzard. Any questions or comments? Any comments? Okay. If there are no questions or comments, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passed the emergency. We are on to agreement number two. All water management system maintenance agreement with Milton Cloud Plains Area School District.
This is Ramsey. Go ahead, Mike.
I, I was just going to let everybody know that Bill Everhart from the school district is available if anybody has questions.
Okay, motion by Dan Nancy and second by.
Alder Burke seconds.
Okay, so this is a pretty massive product as you've already read. And while since the very large high school attention, it's not surprising. Mr. Everhart, do you want to make any comments or say anything or should we move on?
You should move on.
Okay, anybody has any questions or comments? Okay. And this is all those in favor of the motion to approve the storm water management system with Milton Cloud Plains Area School District say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone, anyone opposed? So the motion passed the emergency. We are on to the next.
Thank you all.
And I'd like to proceed with the request for proposals for the Fesenbank Creek Master Plan based on various committee feedback. Who goes next?
This is Alder Burke. I would direct us to proceed with the request for proposal with the Pheasant Branch Creek Master Plan based on the committees.
This is Fazard. I'll second that.
And just as a quick note, Robert, I believe it's proposals, not just one proposal.
Thank you for that correction.
I knew you would appreciate it.
The motion is for the proposals. And second is also for the proposals. Okay, any questions or comments? I think we have gone over these parts. So, okay, the motion is to approve the request for proposals of the Fesenbank Creek Master Plan based on various feedback. All those in favor of this motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Matt and Mark? We are on item number two. Updates on planning related to the pool and flashback. We had a lot of discussions. Do you want to continue this, Mark, anyone or anyone else?
Well, I think we're just going to open it. I mean, we had a very long discussion in finance. I don't think we came to any conclusions. It would be helpful, I think, if, if we had Bill's forecast up just so people understand the potential impact of this. I think for those that weren't at, on the finance call, there are two decision points that have to be taken care of. The first is that we really can't do anything definitive until the state and CDC make their final recommendation as to whether or not the pool should open. And after that's done, then the next decision is whether or not we should open the pools based on what our forecast. open the pools based on what our forecasts look like. And it's not just a financial forecast, but, you know, the entire gamut of, of what it does to the community as well. So I think that's the bigger decision is, you know, what steps should we take? If and when the city, the state and CDC say yes, we can open, you know, we need to have some type of long discussion, I think, as to whether this is actually appropriate for the city.
I agree with Mark. Other questions or comments? Anyone else who want to be in the video or who wants it?
This is Bill. There was a request to, to bring up the, uh, projection that Public Lands had put together at Finance Committee. Um, I can share that, but I, I need to, the agenda to stop being shared before I'm able to share that.
Okay, so you will do it at the next meeting then?
I, I can do it now if Lori relinquish, relinquishes control of the shared screen. Thank you.
Sorry, how about that? There you go, Bill.
Oh, wrong one. Working on it.
So I have a question while that's coming up. Has it been proven that this virus cannot be spread in pool water even with chlorine?
Yes, it has. It is on the CDC website that pools are safe and that you just need to adhere to any guidelines that are put forward within your state.
Okay. And, and deck's, deck surfaces are, are, are safe?
Well, uh, they're saying in the pool water and this is a respiratory illness. So basically the same rules are kind of applying. Now, most of our deck space does have, you know, people who are been in the pool, tracing across it. And the CDC on the last meeting that I was on that they're on, um, really is, is more concerned with that, that social distancing piece of like, someone, you know, being asymptomatic and kind of that, the, it's the finite particles. But again, they have stated that they felt fairly comfortable with pools.
Thanks.
Rebecca, I have a question. Having been there a lot in the summers with my grandchildren for swimming lessons. My concern is not the pool water, but the chlorine will take care of that. How are you going to limit all the people that are sitting there side by side within two feet of each other? On, you know, the terrace area, especially for, especially for lessons.
Well, actually, moving forward based on everything, there was four pieces that came out of the meeting that I was on that had a CDC representative on it. And then I've used that to prepare the plan that I've submitted to the county and subsequently to the state. Basically, you will be, you have a couple of options, right? Take away all deck furniture and have people bring their own stuff. But any way you do it, you have to have it marked where that furniture can go. So in looking at, um, for us, we would have to be marking and putting a chair basically along the deck. Chairs, you won't be able to move them. They will have to stay where they're located to ensure that they're properly distanced.
And that would reduce significantly the number of people that could be attending for lessons.
Social distancing requirements would significantly reduce anyone attending, the number of people, not just lessons, but all around being able to attend the pool at any one time.
Okay.
This is Emily. Um, I just wanted to say, I, I'm glad everybody is concerned about all of these things, both from the financial and the, the health and wellness of our community. As a parent of two small children, if we have a chance to open up these things, they need to get out for my sanity and for their sanity. And if I feel that way, I'm sure lots of parents feel that way. So when you come to have those discussions about health, and I do care about that and the social distancing pieces, please ask, as we're, we're stuck inside and, and teaching them while working.
Emily, I, I, I feel for you. I too have children. I have a spouse. Has lost hours as well as pay working for the UW in an area in which you would pretty much assume that it's essential services. Um, so, you know, I, I can feel where you're coming from, um, because we're all sick of each other. Let's be honest. And I think it's very important and in our discussions as a staff of talking about that we need opportunity for respite. And this is a really important opportunity for respite. It's also an opportunity for, I've had to interview staff. I've had to proceed with all the interviewing of staff for the summers and our students are telling us they need something. Their sports have been canceled. Their other jobs have been taken away from them. They're not seeing their friends at school. They're excited to come to work because they have that opportunity for their mental wellbeing, their social wellbeing. So I, I completely understand and why I've been pushing so hard at the state level that we have to have something in place rather than an arbitrary slapdown or that we haven't considered how pools fit into our reopen plan. So I, I, I'm, I've been working very hard on this. This is me up at night, literally thinking about what can we do to ensure the safety of our staff, of our patrons and get back to the roots of what Park and Rec is about. Park and Rec started as social welfare and public health and is an essential service. So, um, we've put a lot of time and effort into this and that's why this is, this is so important moving forward.
Okay, so then you want to go over this. Everybody can look at the table. It's very obvious.
I think we also need to think about that this is, that if no numbers change for the course of the summer as well. So we're looking at it from this one snapshot of, of time that right now when we open, this is what it looks like. And all of the staff that I've interviewed and all of our return staff, we've talked about that each month, it could be different. We might find that we're prepared to have more people back at the pool and then our numbers are going to change. Or that maybe in June, we can't have swimming sessions, but in July or August, we could. So this is a very fluid document that we have to think about as well.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. So, Bill, do you have anything to add?
I don't really have anything to add unless there are questions. Public Lands put together the, the projection that's up on, on your screen. Um, as they indicated during the Finance Committee meeting, it is a guess and it's based on a snapshot in time. Uh, we know that there will be a, a financial impact here. Uh, we've discussed other impacts in the general fund budget, but I don't have anything to add unless there are questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Bill? Or any other questions?
I would, I would like to make a statement. I've got to admit, I've got concerns about the budget. And I'm looking at it in terms of our entire budget for the rest of the year. And something we've got coming up in November that's very critical is the election. And we haven't talked about that yet as to how it's going to work. Certainly for the spring election, we had a huge response in terms of absentee ballots. I want to be sure we have adequate money for the absentee ballots because it involves mailing out everything. And one suggestion that we need to do is to hand stamp with an actual stamp all the return envelopes so that we can document the date that it was actually mailed on, so we don't have those issues that were coming up in the primary. And we haven't talked about additional costs for that. Another additional cost would be PPE, personal protection equipment and hand sanitizer for holding the election, potentially a diff, additional staff to handle it. Uh, this is independent of the pool, but I'm saying this because we're not talking about COVID-19 potentially returning. And yes, it looks like we're doing better right now. And I think we probably will do okay over the summer. When the students come back, if they do come back in the fall, it will be a totally different story because we'll have people coming in from all over the world who could potentially bring it back. And certainly in the scientific community, none of us are thinking this is going to be over for, until there's a vaccine, which is a year or two away easily. So I'm, I'm concerned that we, I think we need to be very cautious financially, also in terms of just going forward. What our tax revenues will be next year too. But we also don't know what else we're going to need extra money for just to get us through the rest of this year. So do we want to open the pool in four weeks' time? I'm not sure. And that would really be independent or truly dependent on the state and federal guidelines for opening it.
So I think in the Finance Committee, I think the energy seems to be that that's very far the and the state has to say and we may have to delay this program five weeks. And, um, Mark has built for some more mental things together. So that's very, uh, so is there any thing else that someone would want to add at this time?
This, this is Robert. Thank you. Just one more point specific to pools. It, it is a tough call and that's why we're all struggling with this. There's the financial concerns, which we always subsidize our city pool, which means that we lose some money on it every year in the best of years. And obviously these numbers show that it's maybe projected as best we can, that we might lose even more money this year and we definitely would because we're going to have some fixed costs and less income, uh, to pay for those, less revenue. So the cost is a concern, but the one thing I guess I want to point out that's a positive is again, a pool is one of the safer areas according to the CDC. We're going to have a lot of people this summer out and about. And one thing to remember is if they're not going to the pool because we don't open the pool, they will be elsewhere. People are still going to be out and about. We think there's people walking around too close to each other in parks now. In the, the summer, there's going to be more, there's going to be more people everywhere. And if we don't give them any outlet, I'm concerned that we'll have, we'll, we'll have other areas where people are going to be, um, exposing themselves to the COVID-19 virus. And I guess I just want to state that while the pool will never be 100% safe, the, uh, it, it may be safer than a lot of other options out there too. So just keep that in mind as we're talking about the pool, that it is actually a place that tends to self-sanitize itself as long as people keep their social distance. So, thank you.
I also think that we have to probably take into consideration if we're not going to run the splash pad, how much that is, that is a free entity that we offer to people. I think we also need to look at what the cost is there that we are not spending to operate that splash pad. And then is that basically repurposed in this area? It, I don't know if it's a wash. I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but it's also something that we have to look at if we're not, we're not running the splash pad. And that Robert makes a very good point that we're, we're taking yet another thing away as it is. Um, so what is the alternative?
So Rebecca, for the benefit of those who are not in the discussion at Finance, can you explain why it is likely we will not open the splash pad?
Because if we open a facility, so there's concern that we are a pass-through system. So we basically pass water through. We do not chlorinate the water that goes through the, the splash pad. So it is just, it's lake water for lack, lack of better word, right? So with that, with, um, it, it's, yeah, it's water just kind of getting dumped on you. It's not being treated. The CDC is saying proper treated water. They are not finding the spread of the virus. Splash pads that are not treated, um, is a concern. The other concerns that have been mentioned, then there is no staff at our splash pad that would enforce social distancing. So we would have to basically employ someone to do that. The next piece is that we do not have a hand washing station located at there, um, at that area to be taking care of things. We have to have a disinfecting, um, plan in place because that's part of opening as a frequent disinfection plan. So that's not necessarily something that we have established at the splash pad. So without having some of those pieces in place, the risk is much higher there to open it up. And, um, you know, we'd have to think about all the things that we have to put in place to be able to open it.
So just a point of clarification, the splash pad water is treated by the city of Middleton, is not supplemented with chlorine. Right? We're, we're using our own municipal water to run through there. It, it is treated the same as your own tap water is. It's just not additionally treated with chlorine.
Yes, and the CDC is saying that the water has to be properly treated with chlorine or the different pieces that we have. That's, that's what they're saying is safe. The standing water at the splash pad, we don't have necessarily research that tells us that that's safe.
Yeah, that's a good point, Mark. There was a possibility of having a social distance and something being hanged. It doesn't add the new component.
And you have to cut lean all commonly touched surfaces routinely.
Okay. Any more discussion or should we, this is, uh, we have plenty of discussion on this one and that's coming back at the next City Council meeting and the Plant Committee meeting as well. So should we?
I mean, I guess Mark Sullivan, one more piece for you two is that we have to be able to contact trace. So unless we set up a, a system for people to sign up to go use the splash pad, um, we'd also have a problem there.
Right. So I, I think you're looking for, for clarification on two, at least two issues here. The first is whether or not we should run the splash pad. And I think, uh, I may be speaking for everyone, but I think there's probably a rationale for not opening it because of what we just spoke about. The second is what do we do with the pool? And in terms of the pool, I think there's, um, the, the first decision, uh, point has to come from the state and there's really nothing that we can do until, that point comes and, and we have more clarification. Uh, I realize the timeline you're on, but, uh, so just so everyone's aware, the, the anticipated opening date is, I think, June 6th. Isn't that what we said? And you need three weeks to, three weeks to get going on that. So we really have until probably next Thursday to make a decision, assuming that the state says yes, right? If the state says yes, go ahead and that it's a safe to open, then the city itself really has till next Thursday to make a decision based on other metrics or based on other factors. And so I'm wondering if it's, you know, you've, you've indicated that you might, that you believe that the state is going to make a decision this week. You know, what happens if they don't make a decision until the week after next? Are we taking, I mean, if we, are we, we would be taking a risk of starting a process that when we'd have to stop, right?
Right. I think, I think our question is, at least my question. My question is really though, are we willing to examine this moving forward? And that I think what I'm hearing from you, Mark, is that we're willing to examine this moving forward. We're not saying right now, um, that we're absolutely shutting this down regardless of what the state says.
No, I'm, 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 I think you're right. I, I'd like to delay this decision until after the state says yes or no. Well, I'm, I'm, no, right? No, right? So if the state says yes, I think we need to have a very quick discussion on how we want to proceed. And that's why I'm, I'm hopefully the, the rest of the council might be open to having a quick meeting at some time next week, should the, the state say yes in the, in the interim couple of days.
By the way, Kathy Olson's hand is up.
Yeah, I, I lowered my hand, but I, my question was if we're not allowed to open the pool this year, will there be some cost savings next year on some of the maintenance that won't have to be done? And right now, some of the machines are kind of at the end of their life. Will we have some extended life in these if we're not able to open this year?
So Careco Aquatics, that does, our pool chemicals and other things have sent a three-page document to all of facilities. If you don't open for patrons, things that you do need to do to keep moving forward so that you don't have adverse effects of, of taking a year to not run your pieces, in essence. So I'm not sure we're going to have lots of cost-saving measures moving into 2021 if we don't run this year.
Thank you.
So thank you, Kathy. Now Rebecca, do you know about the splash pads accepted annually? Or city which is planning to open their splash pad?
I'm sorry, I, I can't hear you. Something happened.
Do you know of any city or school district where they are planning to open their splash pad?
Mayor, I'll, I'll answer that. I, I think what we're likely to see is that the state would allow communities that have recirculating splash pads to reopen at some point when, when guidance is given to do that. There'll likely be, you know, social distancing requirements and, and you know, the contract tracing is going to be something that they'll have to figure out because that's going to be a challenge in a, in a free flow kind of environment like a splash pad is. But I'm very confident that based on everything we're hearing that, that our splash pad, because it's a flow-through, because it's not treated by chlorine, we're not going to get guidance that we're going to be allowed to open that, especially early this summer. And I, I think even later in the summer would be a challenge, just because you know, the, the health reasons more so than anything.
Thank you, Matt.
Can I ask, the updates at this, at Lakeview Park, including, it was supposed to include some of that treatment. Did that go through or is that off the table?
It
For future out years?
It, it's not off the table, and I think this probably gives even more credence to exploring that recirculating system. But it's not something that was included into the Lakeview Shelter budget.
Thank you.
I, I just want to add that I'm, I'm sorry for you guys in the, the pool and splash pad department in, in Parks and Rec, just because this is hard and it's really hard to think about the kids being told they can't, they can't play there. So I am sorry for you. So, and I know that Emily's neighbors, Emily's district, that, that's a big important part there. So I'm sorry for everybody there.
Yeah, I, you know, sometimes I help with the plant of flowers at the Lakeview Park, and I see hundreds of little kids during summer on the splash pads, hundreds of them just, it's, they love it, but I guess that's others. Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate your concern and Emily, I understand our life with kids. So, okay, well, we are going to move on to the item number three, which is the hospital is reserved to wait and please have a reservation.
I'm over approve, was recommended by finance and personnel.
Second. This is Susan.
All right, Mark, and the second. Any questions or comments? See that two pieces that became open and they're just filling those pieces that I read that already authorized, so. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, the motion is to, we're permission to fill these two seats up, and these are all of them, they're on the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone else? Okay, so the motion passed, the unanimous. So item number four, COVID-19 personal policy.
Motion to approve, this is Robert, motion to approve the COVID-19 personnel policy as it was amended and approved in the joint personnel and finance meeting.
Second.
And I've got another, I've got some changes also. Kritik, I can't hear you.
Okay, Susan, go ahead and, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're on.
Okay, I think my major concern is, can you hear me?
Yeah, definitely can.
My major concern is where we're talking about work with acute respiratory illness symptoms, fever, cough, shortness of breath. A phrase that should be added is other symptoms of COVID-19 as recognized by the CDC. Because there are asymptomatic cases where people are, there's an asymptomatic period, but not everyone even has the high fever. There's a huge wide range of symptoms and those have been, the symptoms recognized by CDC have been expanded beyond fever, cough, and shortness of breath. So I think we need to indicate that. And I think the rest of my comments, either Bill Morgan or Robert caught.
Susan, Blair, where is, where is the language you were referring to?
On the very first page.
Okay.
Under general city policies related to COVID-19. If an employee becomes ill at work with acute respiratory illness symptoms, fever, cough, shortness of breath, I would suggest we add other symptoms of COVID-19 as recognized by the CDC.
I've got it, thank you.
And then there's another one in that next sub- paragraph right under that, or bullet point under it.
That's excellent point, Susan. I agree with you. So what is your next comment?
That was what I had.
So, aim reference, other symptoms of COVID-19 is recognized by CDC?
That's correct.
The second bullet.
Two places.
Okay, got it.
Okay, any other questions or comments or additions or corrections? In honor of the motion to approve COVID-19 personal policy approved by the joint personnel committee and finance committee, all of them, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone else opposed? Okay, so the motion passed, the unanimous. We are on to item number five, conceptual consideration of Middleton Gold Level Loan Fund. Two months to take it. Mine, Mark?
I can get started before, because it really wasn't discussed at finance committee. So what I put forward was a concept that council consider use of city funds for an economic development loan fund that could be done in cooperation with MADC, the Middleton Area Development Corporation. MADC did meet yesterday, and Robert Burke is your council representative on the board, and he was part of that meeting discussion. But my understanding, Robert, from Kevin Mahaney, with whom I talked today, is that MADC is, as a volunteer board, doesn't anticipate that it would have the ability and the time to review the applications that might be engendered by such a program. And their accountant is swamped with his regular work as well. So there, what I got from that discussion with Kevin is that they're lukewarm at best and on combining funds with the city for a loan program. Now, with that in context, I just wanted to add that I think the need is severe and we'll hear through the course of the summer from businesses who are struggling and may in fact not have sufficient resources to get by. You heard Joe Parisi say that they had $27 million in loan requests, and they have a $10.8 million program. So in effect, that program is, is going to run out very soon if they haven't already. We know that the two rounds of federal payroll protection plans have been, come to a close. So a lot of resources for businesses are out there. The PPP programs were intended to be, I believe, two and a half months to, you know, 75% to protect payroll of employees and 25% that can go towards lease or mortgage or utilities. So I anticipate we're going to hear in June and July, a lot of businesses, even if we are reopened, even if the economy is reopened, we're going to hear from a lot of businesses that are struggling and may fail this summer. So it was in that spirit that I brought forth this proposal. One thought that Kevin had was that we might ask the county if they instead would administer funds for Middleton-only businesses if we were to contribute toward a grant program. So I just throw that out there for consideration, and Robert, you were about ready to make some comments.
I was just going, going to confirm that MADC did hold an emergency meeting yesterday to discuss this topic. The concern is that loans do take quite a bit of work to set up and to manage over, you know, a one, two, or three-year period. And as you stated, the, the board is the board, they're volunteers, and the, there isn't really a staff to, to do this. So we're just looking at the manpower and saying, we don't think we can pull off a whole bunch of little loans. And then on top of it, it, it becomes very expensive because for, let's say if it's just a small loan, somebody wants $1,000, well, you could spend another $1,000 in trying to set up that loan and manage it. So you can really go through a lot of money, just in overhead, to try to stay on top of these loans. So it is problematic. We all see the need, we all think it's a fantastic idea, we just don't know how to implement it. So if there is a way for some group that's already implementing, as you said, maybe more of a grant process, that, that may be an option, but I think the, the management of, of all of these little loans is just going to be too great of a task for a volunteer body like MADC.
Susan West has her hand up, mayor.
Yeah, I've thought, been thinking about this for quite a bit. And I've also been talking to my son, who's a vice president of one of our local banks, and has dealt with all these federal grants. The need is for actual grant money, not loans. When we've got a business that has no, that's been shut down, they have no income coming in, they're not going to necessarily be able to even pay the loan back with 1% interest, and certainly not for a considerable length of time until they really become successful. So I think we need to be thinking of it in terms of a grant program instead of a loan program. And possibly maybe, I'm concerned that there's nothing in here saying what the money is to be used for. Is it for salaries? Is, you know, that kind of thing? Or is it for building something new in a business? And as Robert's saying, who's going to evaluate all of this? And we also still need to look at the overall city finances going forward with this upcoming election.
Susan, to address your questions, when I originally brought this program up, I was thinking of it in terms of a grant program similar to the PPP programs. But when I talked with Kevin Mahaney, he thought a loan program along the lines of what we are talking about, or what I listed here would be better. Though it's clear though that MADC doesn't have the resources to manage a significant loan program at this time. I don't know if MADC would put their money into a grant fund, but we could certainly take another try with that. One possibility, as I mentioned, would be to see if the county would allow our funds to go only to Middleton businesses through the program that they've set up. They, and that is a grant program, and it is geared to be more than, than payroll protection. And it's also targeted to very small businesses, minority businesses in particular. It's being managed by, gained by local. So that, that would be an angle that we could approach and one that I think would better serve the businesses here locally. I guess the real question for the council is would you be willing to put some money up? And Bill has a potential concept for how, where that money could come from, from our revolving loan fund that was going to be repurposed for solar panels, but to continue with solar panel project, but to replace those with other capital funds. Bill, do you want to comment about that?
Sure. And Laurie, do you mind if I share my screen again? Yeah. So the, the concept is that the city had a revolving loan fund that was provided by federal dollars that went through a, a closed process called CDBG Close. And those funds were made available for the city for any public purpose. In the 2019 and 2020 budget, $300,000 out of that $316,000 was earmarked for the solar projects on city facilities. But the concept that we could look at is if we wanted to fund this type of program for around $300,000 for economic assistance, is repurposing those funds for the economic assistance and then using capital dollars, which will be allowable for a solar project. And we could use a combination of excess capital from the 2019 that we haven't taken action on yet. There's some funds that were in the budget for City Hall, HVAC, and boilers, but my understanding is on further investigation, there appears there's 10 years of life remaining, and it may not make sense to invest that amount of dollars in the boilers for City Hall at this point. And then combining that with an increase in our general capital borrowing, we haven't finalized the, the borrowing for this year and would be possible to increase that. So I'm looking at if, if we would fund approximately $140,000 from borrowing plus those other capital sources, we could make up the funding to both move forward with the solar projects and put $300,000 in an economic assistance program. It's an attractive environment in, in which to borrow, interest rates spiked up back in March, and they've settled back down to historic low levels at this point.
Mike, a quick question. Have you talked at all to the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation? I know they administer loans already on a statewide basis. Wondering if there might be a desire or an ability to have them serve, because they already have that kind of expertise in terms of managing and retaining loans?
Luke, I have not. I've seen that Missy Hughes, who's the director of WEDC, has asked the governor for, I believe, 100 million of the 900 million that the state is going to be getting, I'm not sure if I've got those numbers exactly right, for additional economic development assistance. So, they too may be preoccupied with the wider state program. That'd be my concern.
I have a question here. How about somehow encouraging the county, they have that money, which they're giving, that giving much more of it to Milton businesses, or somehow encouraging the Milton businesses to apply for the loans? So, there are federal loans, there are state loans, there's a county loan. How could we help our businesses to go, or redirect money to grants and, you know, to go after them? So, I think if we could help them with that way, wouldn't that be much better? They're already, that money's already there for this purpose right now.
Well, like I said earlier, I think that money is all but gone, because there were $27 million of requests for the county funds. So, our businesses are aware of loans and grants and PPP, and many of them have taken advantage of that. My point was that there is, at best, two and a half months' worth of federal assistance, maybe three months, that businesses are getting, and that takes them through June essentially. March, April, May to June, takes them to June, and maybe into June. But we know that the pain is going to be prolonged. It's going to last throughout the summer. It's going to take a while for many things to bounce back. And so, the question is if we can do something with local funds. And I can assure you that our businesses are going after any funds that they can get. There are a variety of funds that are listed on the Chamber resource page, and we've sent that out on Nextdoor, on Facebook, on NotifyMe. The Chamber has sent it out to their membership. So, the businesses are getting the information. They just may not have enough resources to sustain the horrible economic loss they're going through.
This is very complicated. I think giving is only the one thing, and giving a grant of the this money and then borrow money to fund it for some of the projects, it becomes very complicated. So, we want to help our businesses, and I think we have to find some way to do it. We, do we know that when businesses, I guess I did ask you, we don't even have any sort of list. Could we somehow first make a list whether the businesses, whether they're suffering, and which will meet certain criteria that we come up with? So, I think, you know, it's important discussion, but there are a lot more things that we need to think about.
So, I have a question, Bill. The CDBG funds, are there restrictions on the use of those?
There's no federal restrictions remaining, so they can be used for any public purpose by the city at this point.
So, we could use those funds to subsidize the pool?
You could.
That's the decision here, right? So, we've already been identified, we've already identified that the general fund picture is not optimal. That, you know, we have basically a source of funds, and the question is, what's the right purpose for them, right? Should we fulfill the obligations from the general fund budget before we start doing any additional outreach? Or do we take this leap that we'll accept losses both in the general fund, and then essentially, not to try and put any pejorative terms on this, but this is, you know, this is money that the city's going to give away to business. So, what exactly should our priority here be? I think the council members need to think about that and decide what's the best use of the funds that we have. And I think that's a hard choice, right? We've tried to set up a set of services that we want to provide to the citizens, and, you know, we just finished talking for 30 minutes, 40 minutes in the finance and council about cutting back on those when we have an available source of funds.
Mark, I think you framed that correctly, and I agree with your point of view. I would like to see us provide some business assistance. To the mayor's point about creating a list of businesses, there is no such list, and it would be very hard to do. Most small businesses rent, so we wouldn't even have records of utilities, and maybe not even property tax payment.
How do you decide who you give it to, and would it, you know, how long would it help? I think there has to be some criteria, and, you know, we can't pick, you know, winner and loser, so they would have, I actually like Mark's statement that, you know, that pool, there's a lot of people there, so yeah, there's a lot more to think about. How about someone put from the other city council?
Dan Ramsey had his hand up, but I think he took it down.
Well, my question was, I had a couple of questions. One was, you know, criteria, what kind of criteria? I mean, I think that would get very difficult. The other thing, kind of to go with what Mark said, listening to Bill, he said we could increase our general borrowing to $140,000 then to be able to do the solar project. So, and, I mean, to really simplify that, in essence, we're borrowing $140,000 to give grants to businesses.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we have to, I mean, we have to look at this from a couple of different ways.
Well, I'll make a motion, we defer this. Let everybody think about this for two weeks, and we can
I'll second that, Emily.
Right, I think it's appropriate that we, you know, each of the council members get it in there, get it through their own thought processes, you know, what the priorities should be, whether it's, you know, simply to sustain what we've budgeted, the services that we've budgeted, or to essentially what Dan is saying, to borrow money to give to businesses. I mean, that's really what the decisions are, so I hate to put things in a box and tie them up with a ribbon, but that's kind of where my head is, is just everyone has to come to their own conclusion on what the best proceed, on best how to proceed with this.
And I'd like to add, in terms of us thinking about it, think about what's happening in the future too, and how we're going to survive.
This is Kathy. I have a question for Mike. Now, when you approached MADC, you didn't, did you say you approached them with the idea of grants, or, and they said loans? Or did you go forward with loan, a loan idea?
Kathy, I started with Kevin Mahaney, and in a discussion with him, and Kevin thought low-interest loans over two years would be a better approach than grants.
Okay, so it sounds like they don't support grants either, correct?
Yeah, they typically, they typically don't. They have been a lending institution, so grants are anathema to them. And that's not what they're built for, generally speaking.
Okay. So, this would be a basically go it alone from the city and now, now as partnered with MADC?
Well, I think Robert and I could reapproach them about the grant program. I don't know that they would go that route, but we certainly could have that discussion.
Mike, they started out, MADC, with the $500,000 grant from TIF, didn't they? Wasn't that how they, their funding was seeded?
It was a $2 million proceeds of a land sale.
So, that's how they were, they were, it was basically a grant is how they started their funding?
Right, it was a TIF grant of the proceeds from a land sale in Tid3.
So, maybe they would be give some thought to them.
Certainly. Dan, this is Robert again. MADC has been using that money, has been, you know, to give loans to businesses throughout Middleton for years. We're not, we're always looking for ways to encourage development within Middleton, and that is our purpose. And a grant is not necessarily anathema to us, but we do have a limited source of funding, and no new money comes in any, in any one year other than from successful loans that get paid back. So, it's, we just be, we have to be very judicious in what we do with that, and understand that we, if we give away a lot of money and it doesn't come back in, we will be broke, and MADC will be no more.
Well, we're not, we're not asking that MADC gives all their money away. What, my only point with this was that these are extraordinary times. MADC started out being funded by TIF money. For them to participate in some kind of grant program, I don't think there is a huge ask.
It's not. It just needs to be, it just needs to be laid out, so.
I mean, I believe that's what they're, you know, that's
Yeah. You're correct, and we will, we will be happy to look at that. This all just came to us, you know, a day ago. So, right now, the answer is we, you know, as a loan system, we can't figure out how to make it work. If we want to look at it again from a grant system, again, somebody has to determine how that would be run and who would be running it, but that is an option.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, the motion is to defer, and let the city council, others go and talk to their council, and come up with some ideas. Okay, if there's no more questions that come, out of the favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So, the motion passed unanimously. We are on to the ordinances. This is the first reading. My last, they've been taken upon rule of the motion to suspend rules under section 1.07 Milton General ordinances. It may be best not to, these two characters, item number one, ordinance three, zoning lands from B to the U to PDDGIP, data on four meter apartments, 3001 through 3101, four meter street. It is part of the ordinance for the zoning lands from B to the U to PDDGIP.
Move approval as with the recommendations as outlined by staff in the comments? Fazard, sorry.
I'll second it, Susan.
Susan, second, and some of you may not know, this is the, I think, fact seven is dropping this 124, you know, it's what I guess it's written here, right along Farmington Street where Colonial Model used to be. Any questions or comments? Okay, out of the favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Orderment, menu, general implementation plan, part track, Carlos Park, 3509, track and drive.
This is Ramsey. I move approval.
This is Fazard. I'll second it.
Any quick comments? That's a good project, so any questions or comments? Otherwise, the motion is to, many TIP, our track and others, far, far 3509, track and drive. If it's complicated, out of the favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So, the motion passed unanimously. We are on to planning and zoning. That's the implementation plan for I in 2700, plating below. They stop, they're complete with the future. In the motion
Move appro This is Ramsey. Move approval.
Fazard, I'll second.
With the contingencies listed.
I mean?
With the contingencies listed.
Okay, all the other continued questions. Okay, any questions or comments? Out of the favor of the motion to, as I said, by I, this last, 2700, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, the motion passed unanimously. This is a pretty exciting project. So, the next one, even more exciting, is the committee point, confirmation of Minnesota's we need to make one case that Alderman Luke Fuad is not 104,000, so, so that should be deleted. So, he was the city member, the vital role, but now I think Diddy is the the elder on that community, so, with that one change, is a motion to approve.
This is Alder Burke, motion to approve.
This is Katie. I will second.
Any questions or comments? I talked to every one of you, and you're quite happy with what you have, so the motion has been made, and second, out of the favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Right, motion passed unanimously. We, the motion, thank you for all your time and all the discussions, and we, the motion, are
Move adjournments, Ramsey.
Emily, I'll second it.
Out of the favor of the motion, say aye? So, we are adjourned.